Good evening. I'd like to call this community the whole meeting for May 25th, 2021 to order. Can I get a motion that the agenda for the May 25th, 2021 community of the whole meeting be adopted as presented? Counselor Shannard makes that motion. Any questions or concerns? Mayor Zahara?
I believe the motion should be for adoption of the agenda as amended as we are moving the one item into in camera.
I'll accept a friendly amendment.
Excellent, thank you. Any other questions or concerns? All right, all in favor? Motion carried. Can I get a motion that the minutes, the May 11th, 2021 committee, the whole meeting be adopted as presented? Counselor Wilkinson will make that motion. Any questions or concerns? All in favor? Motion carried. We have no delegations. Moving on to reports from staff and infrastructure and planning. First up, we have Vision Park Water Treatment Plant and Washroom Facility Budget Adjustment. And is this by Mr. Fisher, welcome?
Yep, you bet. Thank you for having me tonight. Attached to the agenda is the report from me. So just going to hit on the high points on it and then open it up to questions if that's okay for you. So we had designed and tendered Vision Park Water Treatment Plant and Washroom earlier this year. Closed in May, we received four tenders from pre-qualified contractors ranging from 2.8 million to 3.3 million. Our current budget is 1.8 million. Give or take a little bit of change there. And it's intended to cover the construction and engineering during construction for the facility because we were required to do some inspections and stuff to comply with requirements. So what we did is when the tender closed, we reached out to the low bidder and asked them if there were any alternates and some low hanging fruit that we could find to change the design and get a reduced price on the building. So they came up with some options for us to save about $200,000 with some simple architectural changes. So like finishes inside the building and stuff like that, that I think makes sense for the building and for us to proceed with if we're okay with that. That would reduce our required construction cost by about $200,000 from the 2.8 million to 2.6. With the engineering requirements, we need to fund about $2.7 million. So what I've done is I went through our existing programs to see where we had existing cost savings that we can apply to the project. With our water treatment plant groundwater monitoring project, that's wrapping up and we didn't need as much money to complete it as we initially thought. So there's $600,000 there that we could potentially use for the funding, the construction of the water treatment plant. There's $150,000 from our performance study. After we got proposals and our sampling program, we'll need less than we initially thought. And then there's about $150,000 available from the federal gas tax that's not currently allocated that we'd like to apply to this project as well. So the net benefit of these changes would cover the amount that we need to meet for engineering and construction to move ahead with it. And wouldn't require any additional draw off of the existing infrastructure reserve. So that's, any questions?
Counselor Shannard?
Hi, thanks to Mr. Fisher. I liked the way you went through the budget and found money. The only thing that concerned me is when you're doing a project and then when we start cutting back corners. I do believe, like you're saying, finish and stuff, but what will that take away from the original? Because granted, we're saying it's 2.8, we got it covered. We always expect sometime there's some unknown surprises show up, you know, a 5% to 10% margin. So I don't like the idea of cutting out 200,000 because you're at nine, 900,000. So if you left the 200 in, as long as it's nothing super important because you don't want to build a project and go, but we're going to skip this, is that going to take away from the original intent of the project?
I don't believe so. So the primary architectural change that's being considered is switching the roof material and siding material. So instead of a brick, it would be a cement fiber type board, which is still a fairly tough and robust finish. A lot of the architectural features, like there's some heavy timber construction features on the building, those would remain because they would require engineering to remove. So we didn't go into that level of detail to cut these costs at this point in time. We didn't change anything on the process equipment at this point in time and the other big savings that we have is deletion of an optional piece of equipment for operations that we can make to without.
Anyone else? Counselor Byer?
Thanks, after the chair to Mr. Fisher. In the report, it says that you've left about 150,000 for contingency. Is that the regular, sorry, 150,000, is that the regular amount or percentage that we would normally have set aside for this project or is it a little bit less?
It's a little bit lean, I'm going to be honest. Normally I'd feel a bit more comfortable with about 10% going in, so that'd be about 280,000, give or take. On a normal project, 5% is okay. And if anything with underground, you never know what you're going to hit. So that can eat up a contingency fairly quick. So obviously we would try to avoid that, but.
Counselor Curry?
Through to the chair to Mr. Fisher, just going back to what you had just responded to Counselor Sharnards. You just said that the biggest piece was coming out of equipment that is not necessary for operating. Can you just elaborate on that for me, please?
Sure. So what, through the chair to Counselor Curry, what the optional piece of equipment that I included in the tender package was a generator's kit. So it's an emergency portable generator that's designed for connecting to the building. In the absence of providing that, we would rent one from a local supplier and they're readily available from what I understand from discussing with operations. And the savings is fairly significant for the number of times we would use this.
Good, perfect. Thank you.
Counselor Wilkinson and then Counselor Byer?
To the chair, I'd like to really commend you for looking around and trying to find out where you can make this fit. I do appreciate that. I think it's quite a costly project. I really hope that ball is back again as much as we once had it here in Anson. Thank you.
Counselor Byer?
Thanks, through the chair to Mr. Fisher. One more question regarding the furnishings. Does this budget include furnishing the entire project as like to a usable state? Like it kind of shows in the picture, there's picnic tables and chairs and and I know that might not seem like a lot, but when you add it all up, I know that the value of those are a little bit higher than what I would probably expect.
Thanks to, through the chair to Counselor Byer. The outdoor picnic tables are included in the tender price. Some of the indoor furnishings, like the meeting tables are not at this point in time. Just we weren't sure how much we were going to need to adjust, so.
Counselor Curry and then Counselor Wilkinson?
Through the chair to Mr. Fisher. And sorry, can you just, we've discussed this so long ago. With this timelines, how soon will it get that well on up and working for the community? And just a little bit of on feedback for how that'll affect our water usage. What's available, knowing, you know, that this wasn't actually like the main purpose of this is not actually for the facility for ball, but for the actual water treatment plant. So timelines and how that will affect our service to the community.
Through the chair to Counselor Curry, the tentative schedule that was provided to the contractors was they needed to be substantially complete by May 2022. That means that the building needs to be in service or ready for use. For the town's water supply, this is a pretty important piece to have. Currently, I'm expecting some future regulatory changes that will impact one of our other operating wells. And I'd like to have something else in place to replace it if I have to take it offline or turn it down.
Counselor Wilkinson?
Yeah, through the chair, just a suggestion for the furnishings and stuff, possibly some of these ball groups will form fundraising groups to provide furniture as they did for Park Down Lodge. It was really wonderful how much the community pitched in on that. So just an idea.
All right, Mayor Zahara?
Thank you and thank you, Mr. Fisher, for your work on this. More to Counselor Sharnards' point earlier, I do, I guess I am a little concerned that we're making this budget maybe a little too tight, as you mentioned. You never know what's going to happen and I would hate for this project to have to come forward to council again. So you know, I would much prefer having a little bit of extra contingency in there. And if you don't need it, then you don't need it, which would be great. But I really don't want to see this project to keep coming forward back to council if we're committed to making this project happen. And nor do I want to see shortcuts being taking place if it's going to not, if it's not, if the building's not going to serve our purpose. So just some feedback from my point of view, but I think it's really this, this project is very important. Two of our major water consumers are on the east end of town. And if one of our main lines goes down, there's no water well on the east end to deal with that. So I think this is really important to create that loop and ensuring that we have water on the east end.
All right, I'll ask a question. Thank you very much, Mr. Fisher. I'm just wondering, further on in the agenda, we have Mr. Reom presenting and I'm just wondering if he has had a chance to look at the plans for energy efficiency and greenhouse gas emissions?
Not yet. So I believe the water stuff is in his portfolio to look at next year.
But the building envelope would be in his, his, his current mandate. So I'd recommend that we get him to look at it at this stage. Anyone else for questions or concerns? Counselor Byer?
One more question through the chair to maybe Ms. Bittner. Does this project, just remind me, did it come with any additional grants related to water security in a community other than the gas tax grant? Were there any other granting opportunities for this?
Now through the chair to Counselor Byer, at this, at this junction, no, we haven't had any other grants applied to that. We used 1.1 million from gas tax fund at this stage.
Counselor Wilkinson?
Through the chair, and this will be to you, our CAO. Did we get money from the pipeline as they went to Vision Park there? And is that just being spent on redesigning the fields or is there enough of it left over for the clubhouse type thing?
Through the chair to Counselor Wilkinson, they actually provided us, I believe, with $300,000 towards this project, which is part of the funding that we have for this project already. I think that's funded in this year's budget.
Just 300,000. Okay, thank you.
All right, I don't see any other hands. So I'll thank you again, Mr. Fisher. Excellent presentation and I hope you have enough to move forward. Great. All right, moving on to low-cost energy efficiency projects, I believe we have Mr. Reom, welcome.
Hi, everyone. Thank you. I'll just share my screen quick with you guys. So, good evening. Colleagues, counselors, members of the public, Mayor Zahara, thank you for having me. My name is Brendan Reom. I'm the municipal energy coordinator in infrastructure and planning. And I'm presenting on some low-cost energy efficiency projects that I've been developing as directed on the April 27th Committee of the Whole Meeting. So there's only two agenda items to go over tonight. So it's just some background for these projects as well, and then the proposed low-cost projects. So just going into the background, as I mentioned, I presented to the Committee of the Whole on April 27th, 2021 with four large, large-scale projects that captured a lot of operational and maintenance risks that I had identified in town facilities during my time in infrastructure and planning. And I also highlighted the need for larger projects to help us achieve our greenhouse gas emissions reduction targets for 2021. Now, the risks I'd identified in municipal facilities were both operational and maintenance related. So I'd identified some aging and inefficient equipment that were contributing to large operational costs and large maintenance expenses. We're also subject to increasing utility and distribution costs as well as fluctuating costs due to the market that we're in for energy. And the continually increasing carbon tax, which is increasing year over year. On the maintenance side, through my energy scans and my thermal scans and work that I've done with the maintenance staff, I'd identified significant deficiencies in building envelopes in all town facilities. Which combining that with our aging and inefficient equipment, we're seeing increased maintenance costs. And for our emissions targets, we targeted a 79-ton emission greenhouse gas emissions reduction by the end of 2021. And as of May, as of May 2021, we've, we have implemented no-cost projects that have, are expected to achieve an annual emissions reduction of 31 tons, which is about 39% of our goal for the year. Now, as I highlighted on April 27th, these no-cost projects will not be sufficient for us to meet our emissions targets by the end of 2021. I estimate that'll take us between 40 to 50% of the way to our target, but more investment is required. So I had proposed four large-scale projects to help us meet and exceed our targets by the end of 2021 and in future years. I propose a municipal LED lighting retrofit, weatherproofing and building envelope upgrades to our current facilities, a retrofit of the civic center boiler and controls on the HVAC systems, as well as small-scale building automation. So not only would these help, help us achieve our targets and exceed them, it would also address key performance issues among municipal buildings that had been highlighted in my time doing energy scans and audits. So as directed by counts, by the committee on April 27th, I'd been directed to identify some low-cost projects that fit into these large-scale projects. In doing that, I've identified nine projects in four buildings in the town portfolio that I've been working in of the total seven. And these projects would provide the necessary energy savings in in tandem with the no-cost projects we've already been working on for us to achieve our emissions reduction target by the end of 2021, as well as address some key issues that are affecting our building performance. So I'm going to give a high-level overview of the proposed projects. More information is available in the attached file that came with my RFR. And, and that highlights more specifically the cost and emissions reductions per project. So diving into this one, and under the municipal LED lighting retrofit, I'm proposing a small lighting retrofit in the atrium of the museum. The, not the museum, the library, my, my bad. Retrofits would be, retrofitting these to LEDs would eliminate the mix of incandescent and halogen lights that are currently there. About 50% of them are incandescent and halogens, which use a significant amount of energy and have low, low lifespans in comparison. So that would reduce operating costs and replace inefficient inefficient equipment that we're operating right now. At a cost of $415, there's an estimated payback of about $471 per year in savings in maintenance and operations. And a significant emissions reduction of about 1.9 tons for this small-scale project. So there's a very good return on this. In the weatherproofing and building envelope upgrades, there's two pieces to this one. The first is hot water piping insulation in the fire hall, public works shop and the animal pound attached to to the public workshops. So in my audits, I've identified 480 feet of uninsulated hot water pipe in the public works and fire hall, which is leading to a significant energy, energy loss in those systems. And additionally, uninsulated hot water pipes specifically on, on recirculation systems like we have in public works are not in compliance with current building codes or National Energy Code for Buildings of 2017. So addressing these would not only bring up these systems up to code, they would save a considerable amount of energy in our hot water systems. And we'd be at a cost of about roughly $2,900, we'd see savings in the 420, $430 range per year and a good emissions reduction of about 3.8 tons per year. The second piece on weatherproofing and building envelope upgrades is weatherproofing itself, specifically in the fire hall and the public library. Now, these, these run a cost of about $5,300, which would, and would net us the savings of about $1,260 per year and giving a significant emissions reduction at 11.2 tons per year. Now, this is ceiling, ceiling windows, weather stripping doors and ceiling penetrations in the building envelope, so walls, roofs, ceilings, et cetera. And these are some pieces that I had identified in the thermal scans that I've done for a building, for all the buildings in my portfolio. And I want to take a quick divergence to highlight the importance of this piece in terms of energy savings and emissions reduction. So on April 27th, I'd shown some images from thermal scans that I performed. And the next two slides are going to be from the library, which shows the most considerable envelope upgrade opportunities that we have. So on the left side, we see the ceiling meeting the wall in one of the multipurpose rooms. And in the thermal image, we see a lot of cold spots around the junction between the wall and the ceiling. And that is indicating a significant amount of air leakage and air infiltration and potentially moisture ingress. And, and to highlight another area on that, around the structural beams and more specifically on the bottom left-hand of the thermal image, we see a significant amount of air infiltration around the windows. Now, last week, Michael Baird and I did a walkthrough of the building with some more tools that allowed us to measure the airflow coming around these, these spaces. And what I'd identified was an actual breakdown of where the energy in the building for natural gas and heating was going due to this air infiltration. And what we found was around 25% of all natural gas in this building was, was just being used to fight this air infiltration. So in other words, 25% of the gas in this building is being wasted. And that presents a significant occupancy comfort issue as well as, as well as a significant energy user, mostly to the tune of about nine tons of greenhouse gas emissions being spent being emitted every year from this building just due to this air infiltration. And that gives us a very good opportunity to both improve the function of our buildings, improve the, improve the occupancy comfort of our buildings and reduce our emissions through these low-cost projects. So moving on to the next, next one we're looking at is a scoping study for the civic center boiler and controls retrofit. What this scoping study would provide is an outline of the exact scope of work that is required for retrofitting this system. And would allow us to proceed with this project with a clear direction and clear, clear scope of operations. This would be performed by a licensed engineer from an engineering firm and the savings and emissions reductions that I'm listing out here are very high level and just representative of what we would see from this sort of project. And the scoping study would give us a much better idea of what we would, what we would be seeing. Now, I believe this civic center boiler controls retrofit as a larger project is very important. And we're in, we're in a very good position that we should be pursuing this one and be very, be very proactive on this. We're at a, we're at a point where we have low building occupancy due to the COVID shutdowns. We're in a non-heating season. And every year that we operate the current system, we're increasing the risk of failure of the current unit. It's a very old units, roughly 50 to 60 years old. And operating costs for that unit are very high, maintenance costs are high and parts are very difficult to come by, as I've been told in my discussion with our maintenance staff. So I believe we need to be very proactive in tackling this project in order to create a better, a better, more efficient system for that building as well as improving occupancy comfort for the occupants and employees in that building. The final, the final bundle pieces of projects in this bundle that I'm proposing here are, is in small-scale building automation. It's, these are simple programmable thermostats and in the public workshop maintenance space as well as the fire hall truck bay. This would run a cost of about $5,300, but net us a very good savings at about $3,000 a year in utility savings. And a very high emissions reduction of about 27 tons per year. Currently, there's no programming and scheduling available in these spaces due to, due to the aging equipments and aging thermostats in this building. So this has given us very low control over the heating and ventilation and air conditioning in these spaces. And in some, in some spaces in public workshop in the fire hall, truck bay, there are about four, four thermostats for a single spaces, which doesn't give us very good control. And now tying all these into a single programmable units will give us very tight control over our heating and allow us to achieve very high savings. So just as an overview, over, under the bundle of the three projects, the LED lighting retrofit, weatherproofing and building envelope upgrades, the civic center boiler and controls upgrades and small-scale building operations, and proposing nine projects that would net us an annual emissions reduction of about 44 tons per year. With an investment cost of what $16,500, we'd see about a $5,200 per year saving in utilities. And that would give us a payback period of about 3.2 years, which is very favorable for these sort of projects. It's, gives us about a 32% return on investment. And I don't know how everyone else's investments are doing, but I would take 32% for a return on investment. So thank you guys for your time. And we can open the floor up to discussion after this. Thank you.
All right. Just to clarify, that $16,000 total cost does not include the boiler cost of 150 to 250, correct?
That is correct. That is just including the scoping study on that, that the expenses for the boiler would be a separate, separate item at a future date.
Okay, any questions or concerns? Counselor Curry?
Thank you, Brendan. That was fantastic. I love how organized it is. So when we're looking at that total tonnage, that 26 tons is not actually happening unless we actually change out the boiler, correct?
Through the chair to Counselor Curry, that is correct.
Okay, perfect. And then can I have one more, Counselor? Do you have a proposition, like do you have for us where you want this budget to come from? Have you guys looked at that? Where are you thinking to take this 16,000, Mr. Ham? Have you guys discussed that?
Through the chair to Counselor Curry, we have discussed that on April 27th at the committee of the whole meeting, we discussed that we would be getting this from our Sarah.
I know, I'm pretty sure.
Through, through the chair, it's from the energy reserve.
Energy reserve.
Thought so. And the current balance on that, Ms. Bittner?
We are budgeted to have around 700,000 in the, at the end of the year.
I think Counselor Byer, you had your hand up, and then Counselor Shannard?
Thanks, through the chair to counsel and administration. Thank you very much, Brendan, for the project or for the presentation. This is something that I am quite excited about to see that we will get some weather, weathering, building envelope weathering done on our town buildings. It's something that is kind of locked in the past and, and council has never, you know, and our council included, hasn't dedicated funds for that. I know sitting on the library board, we've discussed that numerous times at the library board level and something that, you know, all the, the cost savings is great. The comfort level for the patrons and the staff is something that was always brought up. The children's area had leaky doors and you know, like you could feel like the wind coming in while you're sitting there on the ground, minus 40, and you can see the frost building up and you know, and it's made it a really uncomfortable building for the patrons and the staff there all day as well, you know, can have similar comments. The staff room in the library, you know, is so cold, it's unbearable to even sit in because of all the drafts. So, you know, we're talking about energy savings from greenhouse gas. So, you know, we're talking about energy savings from greenhouse gases, and that is absolutely fantastic, but I believe Brendan mentioned it once, was the occupancy comfort. And that's, I think, a really big deal when we consider the staff and people that use the facilities every day, including in the town office and all the buildings that were mentioned, that, you know, going to work in an environment that is very uncomfortable to be in all day is, is not a really nice place to work. So I'm really happy that, that this has come up for discussion and that we have a plan, and I'm very supportive of of these projects going forward. Thank you.
Counselor Schneid.
Hi, thanks for your actual presentation. Where I'm looking at at first, I thought, wait a minute, I missed something. Good thing Counselor Sorenson brought it up, because it said boiler replacement, 2,500 bucks. I thought, no question, do it. My question is to Sarah, our intern CEO. At one time, we used to have a building maintenance fund. So I know an example, years ago, when the library needed to do air conditioning heater and stuff, we had money put aside because all these buildings we own and unforesee things happen. So I do like the idea we're taking out of the energy fund, but the town office, I would totally agree, it's probably too late now, but if we can fund it, it would make sense with the building not being used and heat is very important, because I'm sitting in a room right now and I'm going, it's cold in here and it's warm outside. But overall, the building, it would be a total disaster to hit minus 25 this winter when we're all back in here and everyone's freezing and running around with portable heaters. So I would like to see the major ones done. That's a very important one, as Counselor Byer mentioned, comfort. You don't want some people sweating and some people freezing. So I would like to see if we can put some money in, let's move ahead with this boiler. That seems to be a big ticket, but the most important one.
Counselor Wilkinson.
Through the chair, thank you very much, and I think these are much needed projects that we have to do. I had to look up that NECB, National Energy Code of Canada for Buildings, and I just wanted to ask you about our Boys and Girls Club that's getting renovated. And this said that after 2017, any building permits issued had to meet these standards. So when a place like that is just getting refurbished, is that a building that has to meet the new standards?
Through the chair to Counselor Wilkinson, that is correct. Any substantial renovation of existing buildings is required to meet the NECB 2017. And I have, I have doing a bit of, bit of work with the crew that is doing work in that building, and we are making sure we're going to that standard.
Oh, that's really nice, instead of after the fact, acting to do it. Okay, thanks very much.
Counselor Byer.
Thanks, one more question through the chair to, I'm not sure who, to administration. So regarding the, the civic center boiler retrofit, I think it was about 250,000 that was estimated it may cost to, to do those repairs. If the next council decided, our council hasn't, you know, been in discussions with this, I'm just going to make this clear. But if the next council were to, to do any kind of renovation, major renovations to the building or relocate the town civic center in the next 10 or 15 years, or I'm not sure how long a boiler lasts, does this, is this something that can be utilized in another facility? Or is it, once it's in this, it's, it's only home is, this would be its forever home, is what I'm asking.
Yeah, through the chair, I'll take that one. I think, I think that we expect the civic center to be around for at least 10 years and that a boiler would last a substantial time longer than that. However, in order to remove it and, and replace it into some other building, we might be able to, to look at that in the future. But I mean, that's purely speculation, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'll provide my comments. I'm in total support of these four projects, and I hope the rest of council is as well. Yep, I can't be any more clear than that. Thank you. All right, no other comments or questions? We will move on. Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Rehm and Mr. Ham. We have no information items, no sundry items, no questions from the media or that I have, I know Adrian said she wasn't, had any questions or any other questions submitted?
Good evening, council. No, there are no other questions from the media this evening.
All right. Can I get a motion to move into a closed in camera session in regards to Foye Section 24? Counselor Curry will make that motion. All in favor? Carrie, we'll see you soon.
Mr. Chair, if I may, can I make a comment before we make that motion?
Did we lose Counselor Bevan? I'll just give a minute for Counselor Bevan to show up.
Sarah, just while we're waiting, I need to get clarification before I respond back to the chairperson of the recycling. That money that you said for First Avenue, was that just First Avenue in town or in town and out by the GYPSD offices as well? Because it's all first, it's sort of confusing.
I think you should have that conversation offline. We're in a meeting.
Okay, if you'll stay on after, I'd appreciate it. Thanks.
Yeah, I don't see Counselor Bevan coming back, so I guess we'll proceed without him. Can I get a motion for adjournment? Counselor, Mayor Zahara makes that motion. All in favor?
Before we go offline, Mr. Chair, just want to thank Ms. Bittner for her incredible leadership during the last number of months as our interim CEO. Today is her final council meeting, and I just want to express our extreme gratitude for all your assistance the last number of months. You have been tremendous and fantastic. Also want to recognize Ms. Parsons as well. She's been the glue that's kind of helped all of us keep everything together as well, and really appreciate both your efforts as we move forward with your new CAO. So thank you very much.
Oh, thank you very much, counsel. Yeah, Kayla was definitely the glue that kept me together on some days, that's for sure. I want to thank you for the opportunity to, to serve you as a CAO for the, for few, for the few months that I did that. Having said that, I am really looking forward to Ms. Beveridge joining us next week. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, everyone. Have a good evening.
Have a good night. Thank you, Sarah.